All right, I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Hey, Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item of business is county engineer.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's three items on the agenda for the county engineer's office today. Resolution 665, authorize an agreement with Broomball Construction Incorporated for the Little York Road Bridge Replacement Project, Butler Township, at their lowest and best bid of $425,371 through August 5th, 2022. Resolution 666, authorize the county otter to pay by warrant $110,622 to the City of Germantown for permissive tax funds for the 2009 West Market Street Phase One project. Resolution 667, advertise for the 2022 pavement marking program for various county and township roads at an estimated cost of $260,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the county sheriff, we have Resolution 668, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, project Safe Neighborhoods in an amount of $100,000 for personnel costs. Also, we have Resolution 669, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Regional Agency's Narcotic and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in an amount of $56,624.20.
I'm ready for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Treasurer's Office?
Under the county treasurer, we have Resolution 670, authorize the purchase through a state term schedule cooperative contract from M&amp;J Technologies for Dell Computer Hardware in an amount not to exceed $80,450.15 through December 31st, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Administrator?
Under the county administrator and the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on April 19th, 2022. Resolution 671, approval of bills. And Resolution 672, 671, excuse me, approval of bills. 672, approval of traveling expenses. Both those lists are available in the clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have a number of resolutions for your consideration today. Starting with 673, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 674, authorize a price agreement with Joe R. Fink Construction Company Incorporated for heavy concrete repair services for the Environmental Services Department through April 30th of 2023 with options to renew. 675, approves a courthouse square vendors license agreement for Sweet Pea's handcrafted ice pops through December 31st of 2022. 676, authorizes a change order to the agreement with Becker Construction Incorporated for the Office of Emergency Management Relocation Project by increasing the original amount by $182,197 for a revised total of $936,797 and extending the term through July 31st of 2022. Resolution 677, authorizes an agreement for the provision of emergency preparedness, homeland security, and emergency management services. 678, extends the agreement with McGowan Braybender for employee benefits brokerage services in an amount not to exceed $205,000 through June 30th of 2023. 679, accepts a grant awarded to the City of Dayton by the U.S. Department of Justice Assistance for further development and maintenance of the Criminal Justice Information System, also known as Justice Web, in an amount not to exceed $32,029. 680, requests proposals for a hazmat vehicle for the Office of Emergency Management. 681, rejects the proposal for the Household Hazardous Waste Service Agreement for the Environmental Services Department, Solid Waste Services, and readvertise. The following three resolutions authorize purchases, starting with 682, and this is with Environmental Systems Research Incorporated for the annual software maintenance renewal for the GIS computer application software for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $79,834. 683 is with Carisoft for ProCore construction management software for the Facilities Management Department in an amount not to exceed $61,455.17 through April 30th of 2023. And 684 is with E-Learning Force International APS of a one-year renewal of 300 licenses for LMS 365, a cloud-based learning platform for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department at a cost not to exceed $19,400 through April 30th of 2023. The next three resolutions extend price agreements, beginning with 685, with Addus Healthcare Incorporated doing businesses Arcadia Home Care and Staffing for temporary nursing services for the Stillwater Center through January 31st of 2023. 686 is with Trinity Services Group Incorporated for food management services for Monday Community Correctional Institute through February 28th of 2023. 687 is with Francis Kennels for cremation services for the Animal Resource Center through April 30th of 2023. And the last two resolutions solicit bids for purchases for the Environmental Services Department, beginning with 688 for emergency water storage equipment and 689 for portable water filling station and trailer.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have two resolutions today, and they both are to approve the plan specifications and estimated cost and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities. The first is Resolution 690, Dorothy Water Main Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $996,900. And the second one is Resolution 691, Walnut Grove Tank Rehabilitation Project at an estimated cost of $2,413,750.
Matt, on the rehabilitation project, what's that going to entail?
Yes, we're going to be doing some coating on the outside and repainting the outside and doing some work on the inside, some rehab on this.
Okay, thank you.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Human Services?
Thank you. Under Human Services Planning and Development, we have two resolutions. 692 will solicit a request for proposals for the delivery of child abuse and neglect prevention services to eligible residents of the Ohio Children's Trust Fund, Western Regional for State Fiscal Year 2023. And then 693 will submit a coordinated community plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the OH505 Dayton-Kettering Montgomery County Continuum of Care Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program in the amount of $1,789,452.22. Then under Job and Family Services, we need to authorize agreements for substitute care services through March 31st of 2024. We have five agreements this week. Laura Logue's Behavioral Health Center, Malone's Nursing Consultants LLC, Step Higher Incorporated, Nella's Place, Talber House and Affiliates, and Victory House LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Business Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, we have Resolution 0699, authorize change of business signature cards and core signer authorization for the J.P. Morgan Chase Bank account held by Business Services Department. Under Community Economic Development, we have Resolution 700, authorizing a delegation of activities agreement with County Corp. For the operation of the Community Development Block Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $500,000 through April 30th of 2023. And Resolution 701, amend the agreement with Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley to provide rental assistance to households who have been impacted by and during COVID-19 by increasing the original amount by $1 million for a revised total of $3 million and extending the term through December 31st, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And under County Commissioners, we have Resolution 702, that is to approve a change in the boundary lines between the cities of Ketterina and Oakwood by agreement of both municipalities pursuant to Section 709.37 of the Ohio Revised Code. And Resolution 703 is to appoint Rolanda Holt and Rea Anderson to the Family and Children First Council through December 31st, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we do have one citizen who would like to make comments. Mr. Feaster, would you like to come up to the podium? And you will have three minutes.
I can start? Willie Feaster, no high dress. I'd like to continue what I was speaking on last week about the conditions of the Montgomery County Jail. Commissioner Limberman, Debbie Limberman was telling me that it might have been proposed or they're in the process of building a new county jail. A new county jail is not going to solve the problem. It's the culture and the mindset. I don't care if you build a $300 million county jail. It's the people running it. It's still under the same culture and the mindset. It would never change. Like I said, they got a classification officer that works in there when you first come in. His job is to assign you to your housing unit. And if he don't like you or you're in there for a certain kind of crime, they put you in an environment where they know you're going to get beat. You got guys in there, like I said last week, you got prisoners in there don't even get to eat from the other inmates. And the officer purposely put them in there. You got prisoners that ain't allowed to sleep in their bed. They force the people on the floor, guys take their beds from them. You got prisoners in there right now today, go to commissary, they not even allowed to have their commissary because the guards know when they put them in there, they're going to get bullied because of crimes they committed. Like I said, I sit over there and I was sick of the dog. I damn near died in that county jail. I couldn't get no help. I even asked him and asked him and asked him over and over again. And another thing I'm going to say, it's good people working at county jail. Everybody over there is not unprofessional. I got staff over there I know treats people professionally, correctional officers and sergeants. But I also know within that bunch, it is people that are not nice, that are not professional. I, it wasn't said to me, but I overheard a sergeant with my ears. I don't know what made him say this to this prisoner, but he stated to him, I don't know what the fuck you saying to me. I'm going to say it just like he said it. But I would beat your goddamn brains out in here. This is what he told me. This is a supervisor, a sergeant. And he said that in front of a correction officer. The correction officer thought it was funny. You know, he laughed about it. But that's what the sergeant, I don't know what the inmate could have said to him, but he is a supervisor. His job is, you know, to keep other officers from not saying that, and he's doing that. Ms. Debbie Limberman, Commissioner Limberman also said, she know the sheriff, Streck, I don't even know his name. She said she really believed he is committed to making positive changes in that county jail. You know, and I believe Ms. Limberman. I don't believe she would say that just to say that. But I told Ms. Limberman last week that he don't sit there every second. You got a command staff, that's what you hire them for. A commander, sergeants. He, it's a lot of things go on that he would never know about. It's a lot of abuse go on that guys will never complain about for various reasons. They don't think they're going to, they're not going to listen to him, they're going to believe him or hear him. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
All right. County Administrator, Michael?
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, as school is letting out, we are approaching another period where our young people are leaving school. And I would recommend to our parents to continue and maintain the momentum. We encourage our teens to learn about different careers and different jobs while earning a salary. Please, parents, if you want your young people to continue to work through the summer, find out about our Youth Works program. And you can do that by going to thejobcenter.org/youth. Again, thejobcenter.org/youth to find out about our Youth Works program so we can get as many of our teens into summer employment as possible. And to our local businesses, this is truly a win-win for all of our businesses. The county pays the salaries, and the county also provides workers' compensation insurance for the youth. Again, the county pays the salaries, and again, we pay for the workers' compensation. The county departments and agencies also work with the local companies and give hands-on training to help shape the work ethic for the teens ages 14 to 18. This helps them get ready for graduation. So what we are asking of the business community is please provide our youth an opportunity. And for you, you also get a mentorship. You get an opportunity to give back. And our youth are the future of our community. Many of our Youth Works applicants are selected for internships, and then they also are provided full-time jobs in the areas that they are working in. So please call our Youth Works team at 937-224-1482. Again, that's 937-224-1482. And help us provide these teens with the foundation for them to have an amazing future. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And that is a wonderful program. And I'm telling everybody I know that have, know of someone, a young person between 14 and 18, to get involved because even if you determine that you don't like a job, that's important information to have when you're, you know, going off to your next chapter after you graduate. So the experience is wonderful, no matter, you know, what it is. But in most cases, they're going to have a great experience.
That made me think of a story we've told many times before, but it happened here, I don't know how many years ago now, eight or nine. We had a young man that was placed at one of the Dayton fire stations. He hated it. Well, he thought he was going to hate it. And after being there for the summer, he loved it, and he is now a firefighter. So, yeah. So, you know, whether you come into the, some people think they want to do something, they go into it. That's not what I thought it was. So it's just a win-win. Win for the employers and win for our students. So highly encourage everyone to do it. We may have a few around here.
Yeah. Well, and I know this is the time of year. I have a niece who is graduating and has to decide where to go. But for those that are juniors, we would want, well, and any seniors, seniors right now, we would like all of the high school seniors to be aware of and to think of applying to our county's United Negro College Fund Scholarship. We'll be accepting applications through May 29th. So that's a little over a month. So you have, it seems like a lot of time, but it'll be here before you know it. And, you know, we were, the county's been so wonderful at coming together and raising, I know Tom knows it off the top of his head. I know it's more than $30,000 this year alone. So it's a great program. And the scholarships are open to all students and can be used at any accredited two- or four-year college or university in the entire country. There are other scholarships where they're more restricted, but this one, as long as it's an accredited two- or four-year, they can go anywhere in the country. So, yeah, it's a wonderful tool that we want those who qualify to take advantage of. Now, students must have unmet financial need, which will be verified by the college or university, and they must have a GPA of 2.5 or higher. And they must complete a free application for federal student aid, better known as FASFA. And that is absolutely required. Applicants also need a letter of recommendation from a teacher, coach, mentor, or other leader in the community. And the application and all the details are on our website under the Human Services Planning and Development tab at www.mcohio.org. And there, I'm told, I haven't watched it, but I'm told there's even a video on how to apply in case you have questions. And you can also call Jessica Abernathy at 937-224-8469. That's Jessica Abernathy, 937-224-8469 for more information. So anyone watching, if you know any students who are seniors that would qualify or you think they might take advantage of this, our whole 4,000-plus employees have worked hard to provide these resources. So it is our desire that every penny be used for an eligible student in our community to pursue their better future. So I just wanted to share that word. A quick question, Michael. How many businesses have joined in on this for the Youth Works? Haven't we had like over 500?
We did at one time. We're going to try to build this year to about 300 because, you know, we're post-COVID. So we're building back up. We'd like to have this year about 1,000 youth. But at our heyday, at one time, we had over 3,000 students and we had over 500 employers. So we're building it back up. COVID kind of slowed everything down, Commissioner, but we're building it back up.
Like everything else?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, well, good. It is a wonderful opportunity because, again, we have had several of them up here.
Yes, we have.
On the 11th floor, yeah.
Yeah.
A nice young.
Yeah. Another story, but this goes back to when I was in the auditor's office. And we had a young man who was from Trotwood and just hit it off with everybody, customers coming in. And we all kind of adopted him. And he went away to school on a football scholarship. And it didn't work out, so he transferred. But in the time when he was transferring, he came back and worked for us full-time in the auditor's office. So then he really became like one of our own kids. We went up and watched him play football at Ohio Northern. And now he's a, he's a football coach in Texas and a teacher. And so there's just so many great stories and opportunities. And our students need to take advantage of it, and employers need to take advantage of it because you don't know, you might get a great employee.
Exactly, yeah. Good, okay. Well, I wanted to just give a quick update on the One Ohio. Now, that's the mechanism that's in place to distribute funds from Ohio's opiate settlement. Montgomery County is extremely fortunate to have its own region. Thank you very much because it's very important. There are some communities out there that the counties are like six counties that are having to go through this. And we're just one county, Region Eight. So I'm very proud because I'm serving as the Region Eight Board Chair. The Region Eight One Ohio Board consists of 12 members and is comprised of city leaders, township and village reps, members from the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce, public health, Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services, a member from the Criminal Justice Council, Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association, and our final member is someone who has lived with addiction. Every member of our 12-person regional board has been named. At this point, we need the state foundation to have a quorum before determination can be named on how the funds will be distributed. And that's so important. And that's where we are at this time. And as I get more information, I'll be more than happy to share it each time. So we hope that once the settlement funds come through, we can put support systems in place that will help those scarred by these drugs and help them find recovery, but also prevent future addiction from taking hold on this community. So I know we're all looking forward to getting this behind us.
Well, congratulations, Commissioner Dodge, on being selected as our rep.
Congratulations. Once we get this going.
I won't say congratulations, I'll say thank you. No, it is important. And Judy, I'm glad you're taking the lead on that. We've heard a lot of stories of other regions. And as difficult as I'm sure you and Erica, thank you, Erica, thought this was, we're nowhere near what some other counties are going through. So thank you. On a lighter note, I want to remind everybody that May, we moved it back a month, May, because we usually kick off on Commissioner Dodge's birthday.
That's right.
I know.
I do remember that.
But this year, our Culture Works campaign will be the month of May. And if you're like me, I really enjoy all the arts entertainment that is brought to the county building, all of our other buildings. We have some talented people in our community. We have some talented employees as well. So this year, as in past years, a tax-deductible gift of $85 will get you a passport to the arts membership. And those are very valuable because you get a buy-one-get-one tickets, buy-one-get-one free tickets to many of our arts and cultural events around the region. And it also gets you discounts at several of our restaurants and retail stores. So now that we're recovering from the pandemic, it's time to go back to the Art Institute, Human Race and Muse Machine Shows, Dayton Contemporary Dance Company, and I know they have something coming up that looks really good, the opera, the Philharmonic, the ballet, and all the other wonderful things that our campaign supports. And I don't want to leave out all the small arts groups that it supports as well. You know, reading through that list, I think sometimes maybe we take for granted the incredible arts that our community has. And I am so happy that we are one of two counties in the state of Ohio that fund the arts the way we do. And, you know, through our, through our Arts District, Arts Culture District, it makes a difference. And the arts are, I know Judy says this all the time, when, when we're out there and things, you know, people come here, businesses locate here because we have incredible arts community. And it's, it's easy to get to. And it's just, it really adds to our quality of life. So we, Culture Works supports all of those organizations, and we need to support Culture Works. So you can learn more or donate at cultureworks.org. County employees can go to Workplace Giving, click on Montgomery County, and then you can donate by credit card, check, or payroll deduction. That makes it very easy that way. So Culture Works next month.
Yep. I would definitely echo that. And I actually attended a session last week at the arcade that was, that Culture Works sponsored, and it was mental health and the arts. And it just showed the important role that the arts can play and how important it is even in our workplaces, not just going to things, but, but things you can do within teams and whatnot. So we can talk about all that later, but there's a lot to benefit from Culture Works. Now, we've had a late submission of a citizen's comment, so we had a short meeting. So Ms. Perry, Marion Perry, would you like to come up and make comments?
As I made a comment before about the area where I live, that area is getting raped by unscrupulous realtors. It's getting raped by the people they put in the area. Jefferson Township used to be, it was the first area built for black vets. As the vets are getting older and dying, they're leaving the houses to their kids. How I know, I am a relative of a vet who passed away. He lays or is housed at Dayton National Cemetery. He and his wife, my grandparents. Some parents have left their house to their kids. They flip them, they rent them out, and whoever they rented to, they think they're good people. They turn around and attack it and mess it up for the person that comes, the landlord, to come in and redo it. I have a neighbor that's getting, her landlord and kids are giving this one lady heck. They don't want to reflick the property she lives on. But there's a house where the overhang, I guess you would call it, every time it rains, it collects in that roof. Eventually, it's going to fall down. Now, I don't mind so much. I live, I used to live in a quiet community. That's why I said my neighborhood is getting raped. The people they bring in there are people that might have lived in Dayton. I don't live in Dayton. Whoever brought up this idea of changing our zip code, I used to go to a school out in the city. I remember all the zip codes. And when it was changed from 18, I, as it is now, I'm getting pestered by people because I am, because of my birthday and how old I've become every time I change. and how old I've become every time I change. I was 18 and available to vote. Wherever I move, I vote. I voted already this year. But the problem being is I don't know who started it. I want it to end. I want my zip code back to a decent zip code. I don't like living in 45417. It may make it easy for the post office, but it doesn't make it easy for me. Half the time, I can't get my mail. That's one thing. To prove my point, one time I had to call the bank I bank with and ask them because for some reason, my debit card, I needed a new one. I couldn't get it. So I had to call my bank and say, could you, when my new debit card comes in, could you catch it and keep it and let me know when it's time to get it? I don't like being listed as 17. I don't live there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 3rd at 1:30 PM. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a great week.